Good afternoon, everybody. Uh, welcome to the committee of the whole meeting for November twenty eighth. The town of Hinton respectfully acknowledges that is located on the First People's Traditional Lands. We recognize that the traditional territory will show respect and understanding to those who walked this land since time immemorial. Today, we uphold uh our ongoing responsibility to work together in the spirit of the intent of the treaties with all the first peoples and nations they call this place home. The town expresses gratitude for the opportunity to build a better community on these sacred lands for generations to come. And with that, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Personally agenda was the adoption of the agenda. Uh, counsel, any additions or deletions to this afternoon's agenda? Seeing none, and to administration, any changes to the agenda? No changes coming in. Great, thank you. See you. So council, I look for uh councillor Race.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move that we adopt the committee of the whole agenda for November twenty eighth, twenty twenty three.
Thank you, councillor Race. Counsel, any questions? All right, then I'll call this the question that uh the committee adopt the agenda as presented. Please vote now. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you, counsel. Uh, next we have citizens' minute of council. Is there anyone present? Seeing none, anyone online in the state panel?
No, there's.
All right, so moving on then to our reports from administration. We're gonna move to five point one, twenty twenty four drafts capital budget. Over to you.
CEO. Thank you, Chair. Um, I will turn this one right over to Ms. Borbo.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, CEO. Fantastic. Uh, the package that was sent out last week contains the twenty twenty four draft capital budget as compiled from our October twenty fourth and twenty fifth budget meetings. Um, the first page of the capital plan was a summary or status report of capital projects in progress or completed during twenty twenty three. Uh, the actual year to date will change on some of those. This was simply included to uh provide the community with an overview of uh work that's been done on the capital plan that was approved last year on December sixth. Any questions from the twenty twenty three status report?
Counsel, any questions? Twenty twenty three status? Seeing none, Ms. Borbo?
Having the following page of the plan, uh noted the twenty twenty four projects that were provided in the budget workshop meeting on the twenty fourth and twenty fifth of October. There are three new additions to that. You'll see them partway down the page about halfway. Um, they say new three replacement pickups, new utility trading vehicle, and the land acquisition reserve fund. Now, committee has not had an opportunity to uh debriefed on any of those, so I look to committee for direction if you would like to go through and make any changes on direction on any of the projects presented at the last, or if you would like us to move directly into updates and uh or sorry, presentations on the three new capital project funds.
Counsel, any questions or committee, any questions on the already existing proposed capital? One, council table.
The uh spoke resurfacing an intersection improvement for three million dollars. That just still to me seems like a huge amount of money because the only problem I could see in that intersection is a small little bump in the road in the middle. Is is that, can that project be downsized to make it less expensive, or why are we going to that much extensive repair for the obvious uh problem, right, which is that little bump in the middle of the road, like a little hole? That's, that seems to be very expensive for for resurfacing like. Okay, uh, is that being bid out? Why is that so expensive? It can be downsized, I guess.
Hey, through through the chair to uh all the committee, uh that project is in the early stages of being designed. Uh, so that is a very approximate estimate at at this point. Um, we felt that we've chosen an estimate in the middle. Uh, if the water pipes underneath that road end end up needing significant work, that number will grow. If the pipes turn out to be in good shape beneath that road, that number will shrink. Um, so we budgeted sort of a number in the middle, uh depending on how those pipes turn out. It is sort of the answer there. Uh, there is some significant work that we're planning in terms of uh the jug handles should be concrete instead of asphalt for a long-term solution there. Uh, the asphalt there quickly deteriorates with the weight of those uh heavy trucks. Uh, we have an agreement with West Rager for hauling uh o- overweight loads, uh and that agreement allows them to cause hair in that extent, so we still have to do those conversations with them, but we do have an existing agreement, so that'll uh impact that cost of that project as well. And
So that would be downsized the project, that could down the cost?
Well, i- they could cost share the cost. The the concrete will be uh an expensive thing, but we'd be doing it to uh support those trucks, and so that some of that cost should be borne by West Rager, and we still need to have those conversations, although we do have an agreement with them about that already.
Yeah, and last year we delayed this project because we didn't have the underground work done. We still have an underground assessment done. And now we're going ahead, and we still don't have the underground assessment.
We're very close to having it. The the camera works pretty damn good. We just haven't received the results yet.
I think the point of going ahead without having the underground assessment done is that you have a better idea what the cost is gonna be. So if the underground assessment shows that there's extensive work required underground, and that would about increases the cost, would you come back to us?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, the the other point add about that project is although we have a limited uh expectation of success, we are doing a skip application to see if we could uh get some venture money towards that project as well. It's a bit of a long shot, but we're trying.
Could I ask a follow?
That project will uh take care of that uh problem we've got on that corner with turning. Like the problem we have in that corner when you come out of the Hinton Center is there is no right turn lane. Everybody is making a right turn lane in the dirt there, right? So that will have a proper right turn lane, so traffic doesn't have to back up at the intersection so they can turn right.
We will be looking at that, yes. I don't know what the solution is yet. We're still the infancy of that, but we will look at that issue.
Okay, next.
Okay, um, I am myself next. Um. I guess, is there any particular, this is particular order we should be ready or just asking questions on the previous uh what would be preferred administration?
Uh, through the chair, the the way we saw it was that we would speak specifically to the new items that have been included. Right, then we would uh and then we would open it up, so if there are any uh questions about any individual item or council wants to reconsider any item that either was excluded or is included, and you can want to speak directly to those that the wish of council, we 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 could, we could go through those afterwards.
Okay, so uh if uh councils or committees, okay, we'll go, we'll go with the new ones, present the new ones, uh ask any questions, and then we'll do the other, I'll keep the side uh list here, uh because I'm assuming some of those questions were on things we've already discussed. So why don't we then move to those new items and then uh come back to the existing items? Administration?
Thank you. I'll invite Mr. McGlocklin to speak on the first two. They were in your package, and I believe uh they will be up on the screen shortly. The first one being the uh replacement pickups.
Okay, I just got.
It's towards the end of the capital project group. My apologies, I deleted the third page from here for on.
Re-replacement pickups? Good. It is, it's weird. I don't have a great number.
All right. So this CPP is in front of you tonight. Uh what, when we met last time, we had enterprise uh in in the package, but we uh shortly before we started the last meeting, we decided to push the uh bringing enterprise forward until twenty twenty five budget, although we'll talk to you about it in twenty twenty four. Uh, so the decision to push out uh the decision on enterprise brought this needing to be considered now. Um. So we do have three pickup trucks. Well, we've, we've, we're putting forward three pickup trucks. There is other pickup trucks that are uh also uh approaching the end of their life, but we figured uh three was the uh uh the maximum that we could ask for, and 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 so these are the three that we're putting forward for replacement. Uh, they're currently in our fleet. Uh, there is a number of issues with them. Uh, mechanics do have uh have stated some of the problems with them. In in some cases, the floor is rust, uh rusted out, and you can see daylight through the floor. And I guess I would take any questions on those.
Through the chair, I I will add that the the other pickup that we're discussing is uh there's an engine knock in it, and uh there's uh our mechanics are skeptical about what would last another year. Uh, the other one I believe was uh older. Uh, it would be more of a scheduled replacement, but it is an okay mechanical condition.
Okay, committee.
Counsel Taylor, what's the cost of fixing four, three, and four oh seven? Because it was my vehicle. I want to know that before I replace it. Thank you.
Through the chair, the whole, maybe that's a tough question to do until you actually pull it apart and uh and and fix it. I mean, uh in in both those cases, there it's uh having uh motor problems. Uh, if you ended up having to replace the motor, I would estimate that it would be probably fifteen thousand dollars, it would be a ballpark, but that's, that's a bit of a, I guess you might have it, you have your own guesses that would be as close as mine.
If I may, uh I too have a quick question, and I guess the question it's hard to comment on it because we haven't talked about the fleet services and the possibility. It's not coming to us until next year for twenty twenty five's budget, but if we were to proceed with uh, because I agree with the three oh one uh from what it looks of it, the other two, I realize, you know, the cost of fixing, but what would happen to these vehicles? Um, if the, if the town of Hinton were to go to leasing our fleet, what would happen to these three vehicles purchased? Uh, moving forward, would they stay in our fleet? Would, how would that work?
Uh, through the chair to all of committee, that uh the enterprise program uh flips the vehicles fairly often, uh usually around the twenty thousand kilometer mark. Um. And and so they they would take over management of the fleet, and if you have vehicles that are worth more money going into the program, that will actually save you money participating in the program. So uh there wouldn't be any uh wasted dollars. Uh, we have told enterprise that we're gonna hold off bringing uh their proposals or or their their ideas in front of council until twenty twenty four, and they actually said that the, they would even uh provide us pricing to even purchase vehicles through them so that we could compare uh just a straight per uh purchase price uh for these vehicles. Uh, we would still certainly solicit the our regular quotes uh for comparison, if if these vehicles go ahead. Uh, but I don't believe we would uh hurt the decision of going forward with enterprise in the future by doing this.
Okay, I just have one quick follow-up and then I'm there. Uh, Nisa, um. These look like light duty trucks. Um, I'm just wondering what kind of what kind of, I guess, service do these provide? You know, because when I look at it and and I look at the shape they're in, and only a hundred and thirty one and a hundred and seventeen thousand kilometers, you know, I mean, they obviously aren't high mileageers, but are they hard used that like what is the, because I'm wondering if a light duty truck is not necessarily appropriate for what the, what the service is providing is is my concern.
Uh, through the chair to all of committee, this uh, these vehicles are over ten years old, and so it's uh age ages uh a big, a big factor, more so than the kilometers. Uh, being you, vehicles used in town, they're not used out of town that often, and so we don't put a lot of kilometers on them. Uh, these are the the crew vehicles. Uh, they're used for you know, hauling barricades, uh hauling equipment, uh doing traffic control, doing checks on the roads, just gen- general uh fleet use.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor.
To clarify, now that we've got these three trucks and the next item's another truck, are there cost savings available to us if we were to explore the enterprise solution at this time?
Through the chair to all of committee, um, I I think that uh when we go, when and if we go forward with enterprise, it has the chance to save us uh some money on a regular basis. Uh, it has the potential to uh run a newer fleet, so there's less downtime. Uh, there, there's a number of advantages. There's fuel savings, uh because you're running a newer fleet and and all those factors in into the presentation, but I wouldn't say that uh we should rush that decision. I think it'll take a few meetings spread over uh at 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 least six months for you to make a proper decision on that. Uh, and so I don't think that uh you'd be wasting very much money by purchasing vehicles now and then deciding to do enterprise later.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, uh, Counsel Stasher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So these questions come up before when we've talked about purchasing assets, especially limited use assets. Uh, these vehicles, they only have twelve to fourteen thousand kilometers per year put on them, and it looks like they've aged out before they've milled out. So I'm, I'm again, I'm going to ask if there's any consideration given towards purchasing leasebacks or slightly used vehicles rather than brand new, especially in an application like this.
Administration? Uh, through the chair to all of me, we uh that we could certainly look at that and then bring some options back. Uh, you, you could have this as a uh as a noted uh recommendation, and you could have us uh look for those options first before proceeding with new purchases. I'd be quite happy with that. I think the only difficulty with the idea that's being presented is the difficulty finding uh you know, i- if if they're available and if you can get a good deal, uh I I think there is some opportunities for that. I don't think that that would be a bad idea. Um, but it's, you know, can you source them? That that's the difficult part.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you, Counsel Stasher. Counsel Chambers, you know, mayor.
Uh, through the chair, just a question. So the overall impact on your operation, if let's say two of these trucks were to go down in a fairly short period of time, um, what would that overall impact look like for that crew on a regular basis? Would be fairly substantial, or is there other vehicles within the fleet that could be temporarily used while sourcing a solution, looking at a new vehicle?
Uh, through the uh, through the chair to all of committee, um you know, being down a vehicle or two, I would say is uh sort of normal. It 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 happens, and and we fix them, and we get back going again. So I mean, we can sort of roll with those punches. It's just uh if we delay the decision and and it's and something should happen to one of the vehicles and you hit the point of should you fix it? Well, then we have to come back to council and and provide you those details and have that, have that answer before we can move forward. Uh, but we, we do have other vehicles that we share around, and and that's quite common for us to do what we need to do to be able to still work.
Thank you, Counsel Chambers. Um, Mayor. Looking at the mileage numbers and and uh the report here, it looks like a couple of these vehicles are are very high idle time. They don't, they don't seem to drive a lot. They seem to sit there a lot. Are these trucks the right vehicle or the right, the right item for this? Uh, are they primarily used as traffic blocking safety mechanisms? Could they be replaced by a trailer with lights? Or uh is there, there some other solution, or maybe are we buying the wrong the wrong vehicles perhaps? Maybe we shouldn't be buying diesel engines, gas engines. They're just gonna sit there idling. They uh has any, any consideration uh gone towards the the use of these vehicles and their typical day-to-day?
Through the chair to all of committee, I don't think we've uh, they're used as pickup trucks. I don't, I don't think we could replace them as a trailer uh in terms of whether we could be running diesels. Uh that's a potential. We could look at it. That was council's wishes that 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 would be a much higher uh expenditure off off the start, so I'm, I'm not sure that that will uh knowing that they are aging out, potentially they I, I think you're right. The, 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 the problem, the reason they're aging out is they're ten years old, and they have a lot of idle, that, that, that's totally correct. Um, but in terms of other solutions, we haven't really done that. Uh, one of these needs to be a long box because we end up uh haul, hauling things that won't fit the short box, uh but the, the rest of them would be short boxes.
Mr. Mayor, you have a follow-up?
Excellent. So I understand that the, you know, the cost of diesel engines goes up. Uh, the follow-on question over for some of these units is, do we have the maintenance numbers, how much we put into these vehicles and through maintenance and parts over their lifespan? Is that something that that we're tracking even in our our asset management?
Uh, through the chair to all of committee, uh yes, yes, we have those numbers. I don't have them in front of me. Uh, we in our accounting software, currently we have e- every unit number uh individually budgeted. Uh, so we have a fuel amount and a maintenance amount for every vehicle, and so when something's done to a vehicle, it is coded to that vehicle. So the uh those, those histories are a bit.
Beautiful. Yeah. Uh, and to Counsel Taylor's point about the the replacement cost, I, I think a lot of fleet management uh systems look at and use their metric of that maintenance cost to determine their uh recapitalization of vehicles. Uh, I'd be curious to see those numbers at some point before the the budget discussion rolls out too far, but I'm good on this topic. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I myself, and uh, you know, uh, based on what Mayor, Mr. Mayor uh spoke to in regards to diesel, especially with high uh idling vehicles for whatever reason. I think that that's a, uh, you know, I, I know the cost is more, but the longevity, the sustainability, I'm just seeing that these vehicles' gas may not be the most appropriate uh units for for this particular job. Uh, plate plus might be a little more uh I guess, stable, uh stronger built, usually diesels are. So I, I, you know, it's just something I think that we should consider uh for some of these, especially to if we're going to consider later, uh, you know, and it's not this discussion, but you know, looking at that, when we look at the changing our fleet services to see what percentage might be necessary to have diesel supply. Um, and Counsel Taylor now.
The industry people I've talked to have low mileage vehicles that idle a lot that have engine trouble uh had the problem of they were doing the oil changes uh based on the kilometers, not on the hours of operating, and that's what they think caused the uh the engine trouble, so they changed their maintenance schedule so that the uh oil changes are based on the hours of operating. And that's what they tell me has been the problem to the engine trouble. So is our oil maintenance schedule based on hours of operation, or is it based on the kilometers of use?
To the chair, I would have to follow up with you on that question, and I, I, I do know that we have a, a good maintenance schedule, but I don't know if it's based on.
Well, it's based on, right? So the thing idles ten times longer than it runs for clock. That's what they tell me is is problem. Vehicles.
Thank you, Counsel Taylor. Uh, counsel, um, we have no consensus yet on this uh item. Is there any appetite, Counsel Stasher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to see consensus of councils to include three replacement pickups in my twenty twenty four capital budget. The amount of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Let's speak to it.
Absolutely.
So I think the hundred and twenty thousand dollars is a reasonable number. If that means replacing two of them with brand new units, or if that means replacing three of them with new ones, so be it. I can't support two hundred grand. No, one hundred, one twenty. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Stasher. Counsel currently have a consensus? Any comments or discussion on the current consensus? Mr. Mayor?
A hundred and twenty thousand dollars seems like it's a high risk of not delivering two vehicles even. I'd be interested in upping that dollar value by a small margin to to give them some wiggle room. We look at uh sixty-six, five is their uh estimate. Uh, if we double that off, we're a hundred and thirty-three, so uh would council be open to a friendly amendment of a hundred and thirty-five as the value for that? I
Counsel, we have a friendly amendment uh of a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Is there any objections to that? So we're gonna quickly, just quickly vote to on that a hundred and thirty-five, just to make sure. Um. Don't need to, just as long as it's an objection. Thank you. Okay, so uh there's no objections, then we will make that friendly amendment of a hundred and thirty-five thousand. State of the company. While we're getting it up there, any other questions or discussion on the proposed consensus? Administration?
Uh, through the chair to all of committee, I, I would be uh open to uh uh if this passes to actually have it as a noted, a noted project that we wouldn't do any purchase without bringing it back to council. Therefore, I could bring you back options of what we could source used. I could bring you back, whether there's a diesel option available. Uh, I could bring you back to me, the, the, the maintenance history, and I'd be more than happy to do that, uh, to create it, create that as a known project.
Thank you, administration. Counsel Stasher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For myself, I'm not interested in seeing that. Room for me, that's getting too far down in the weeds. I think it's more productive just to give administration a number, and then they apply that number, say, best seat fit, whether that's two new vehicles or three used vehicles, and whatever best fits the need of the organization. Gas, diesel, whatever. That's not, I don't feel that's up to me to decide. I don't have that information, and I'm not gonna task administration of the word to get me that information, so I trust the gentleman. Thank you.
And if I, I have myself now, um, I'm in favor of the consensus, and I too concur. I, I don't leave unless you have to come back to us, because a hundred and thirty-five thousand is not enough. Um, I think that, you know, that's the only time I'd like you to sit back on this matter, but I think I trust administration to take that money and purchase, and and I mean, hearing this this evening, I'm guessing the option of looking at leaseback and things like that will also be considered uh when looking, especially with a smaller budget. Uh, so I'm uncomfortable with that, but I, I will, I will be in favor of the consensus. Thank you. I see you.
Through the chair, and and just for clarity, we will be bringing fleet management back, but more of us will have some discussion of looking at the different options that are available. There are a number of different options. Uh, you know, we, we run our fleet very traditionally, and we run it pretty long, but uh there's a lot of good data out there on, you know, the ideal time and the total cost of ownership, and there's also a lot of good programs out there that think might be a good fit, so so that more wholesome discussion about fleet management in general will be coming back into it.
Great, thank you, CEO. Counsel, anything else on this matter before I call the question, this consensus? And seeing none, and uh I'm gonna call the question. I'm gonna call the question.
Moritz is gonna do the shoot.
Yes, just seek, yeah, so we're gonna seek consensus that we include the uh just to make sure I get the first one, the uh repl- three replacement pickups for a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Committee, all those in favor? And that is carried, carried unanimously, thank you. Okay, moving on, the administrations.
Thank you, and the uh directly following that one is the utility training vehicle, and I'll turn that as well over to Mr. Bob.
Okay, uh thank you, committee, uh so we separated this one out from the the previous one of three vehicles, because this is growing the fleet versus fleet replacement, that's why we we have separated separated this out in front of you uh at the previous budget meeting, you we did talk about uh hiring an additional uh utility person uh and that was, that's built into the current budget uh but we didn't specifically tell you that we also, that person needs to be able to get around, uh so that's why this is in front of you. Uh again, it was being put forward as a pretty standard vehicle, and I would take any questions.
Thank you, Administration, so I have a a quick question, I guess the intent of this vehicle, is it solely, is it for work purposes or for transportation purposes? Uh this particular vehicle? Like, is it just to get the staff around from place to place, or is it a work vehicle like the previous ones we saw?
Uh through the committee, it is like the previous ones we saw, uh it will leave town very seldom, it would, it it its purpose is to uh equip it with the tools that a utility person uses on a day-to-day basis and uh it it's to run around town doing valves and locates and uh all that good stuff.
Okay, thank you. Committee. Questions on this particular consensus on this item? Counselor Taylor, Mister Mayor.
Well, just to calm down, then a question. You're comparing us to sixty-eight utility operators fully set for other neighboring municipalities. Is that a comparison to municipalities that also won't build, does half of our work for us?
Um disappointed where we're talking about the vehicle and I'm talking about positions.
This is when project justification, referring to the project justification, so it is part of that, they provided this as project justification, you read it. Okay, so that's what I'm talking about.
Okay, thank you. Proceed.
Uh through the chair to all of committee, uh I I would say that that sixty-eight utility operators that stated there would be for a municipality that does operate their uh their own water treatment treatment plant, so obviously that does save us some utility positions. Uh however, currently only having uh two utility people uh is leaving us extremely short, there is a lot of work not getting done on our distribution and our collection systems uh that should be getting done, and and so we feel that we need this additional person uh to start making improvements in terms of uh looking after our water and sewer system.
Thank you, uh Mister Mayor, and Counselor Race.
So if this vehicle is not purchased, but the utility operator is hired, will that person have a job to do?
Through the chair to all of committee, we would uh we would be short pickup trucks, we uh yes, that person would still have a job, we would, and we would we would manage to somehow, some way, then we would still do what we do, we 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 do the best we can with the equipment and people provided to us, and and we would continue to do such, we wouldn't leave you sitting in office.
Counselor Race.
Thank you, Deputy, so should that third position go through, would each operator have their own pickup?
Through through the chair to all of committee, yes, they they would have access to to their own to their own vehicles for running around, uh there there's only so much of the work that requires two people. Uh lot lots of time in the work, it's solo work, and so in order to be uh more productive with the additional person, it does require the additional pickup to do their job.
May I follow up?
Hmm.
So how many people would work in a day, you have three operators, how many would be working in in one day?
Through the chair to all of committee, most days would be all three, however, when you factor in uh holidays and training and this kind of stuff, there's there'd be a number of instances where, again, you're put that, put back down to two people, uh currently we um borrow staff from public works quite often to uh to do some of the tasks, like acquire two people. Uh so there would be a little bit less of that borrowing happening uh with three utility people.
So is there a work, they're basically in that building, working with their vehicles parked outside?
Through the chair.
On a typical working day?
Through the chair, the all committee, their typical working day is out and about in the town through men, through at many different sites throughout the day, scattered across the town. Uh they have daily checks that they have to do at many of the facilities, they're turning on and off utilities for people's houses, they are flushing sewer lines, they are uh looking for leaks, they're they're doing whatever it needs to be in.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, I have Counselor Taylor.
Yeah, I I'd like to see consensus that we purchased the vehicle, I'm convinced that three people will be working out at separate times doing solo jobs, I think for about higher position. They need to have a truck, a really well-equipped bicycle.
Excellent, thank you, Counselor Taylor for that consensus, so council, you now have a consensus to include the utility training vehicle to the twenty twenty-four budget. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, like to see consensus to add this to the twenty twenty-four budget, all those in favor? And that is carried unanimously, thank you, committee, Counselor Stashik.
Just a question. Uh this is conditional on the utility operator being hired. Can this actually be made conditional, or is it just assumed that if that position doesn't get hired for some reason, this vehicle is not purchased?
So you, and I was like
uh through the chair of members of council, um I I I don't know if we need to make it conditional, I think uh it goes without saying that if uh if we don't decide to fund or uh move towards uh an Alex operator, then this would be removed from the budget automatically before this is brought forward to council.
Pretty exciting. That's good for now. Okay, all right, uh committee, then administration, moving on to our third, the land acquisition reserve fund, I believe. Is that the third one?
Yes, thank you.
Uh page seventy-five of seventy-six in our package for council.
Can I will invite Mister Mister Penasik to speak to it.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Ford, so um council, in in front of you, you have a uh CPP for the land acquisition reserve fund, uh and this allocates four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for uh uh opportunities when it comes to uh purchasing of land. Um I think for today, that's uh all I will I'll say at this moment, I think if you wanted to discuss further details, uh my recommendation would be to go to the session.
Okay, thank you, CEO Penasik. Committee. Mister Mayor.
Are we able to go into closed session at this stage?
Anytime.
Then I'd like to make a motion that council going to move into closed session.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, we have emotions, move into closed session, council. Any discussion? Okay, we'll call the question then, to move into closed sessions, all those in favor? That is carried unanimously, thank you, everyone, we will be moving into closed session, if you'd be back, would you like?